Tonight in new business, we have the city manager update. We have board and committee appointments. We have the Harold preliminary concept plan. And we have a rezoning request by William Wright of Wisteria Drive. Those are our items on the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Does that move?
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, new business Ed. I bet you've got a lot to update us on.
I've got a piece of this. As y'all are aware, we had a storm last, this past weekend. Got some new information on that today. The tornado on the twenty-sixth has been classified as an EF3 with a hundred and fifty mile per hour winds. And it touched down at six forty-nine AM that morning. Went along the north city limits, traveled twenty miles across the county before it picked up. And again, as y'all know, we had a lot of utility damage. All the crews came in, fire police, utilities, and public works all came in and assisted with all the efforts. Then on the twenty-seventh, we had another major storm event with rain. There's a lot of different estimates out there, but from what I've seen today, I think we were somewhere between eight and ten inches of rain during that storm, during the storm events. Not, I'm not saying it was a twelve-hour, twenty-four-hour, forty-eight-hour, but that seems to be how much rain that we received during that event. The lake level increased four feet in twenty-four hours. And the Corps estimated yesterday morning when we talked to them that there was a hundred thousand cubic feet per second coming into the lake. Now, that wasn't coming off in the north like it has in the past when we flooded, but it was just coming in from the tributaries and everything around the lake. It took that flow in order to get the lake to rise that fast. So the Corps decided at that time to release forty thousand CFS. That was ten thousand through generation, fourteen thousand with spillway. And then, of course, we had all the tributaries coming in as well. Osalege Creek was, was actually, had more water coming in than had been anticipated. It was over twenty thousand cubic feet per second, which is, as far as we know, the highest it's ever been or the highest on record anyway. So with that, the lake level got, I mean, the river level got a little bit higher than we had anticipated. So the Corps brought that down about seven thousand cubic feet per second yesterday afternoon. And that, we leveled off and it's been dropping ever since. So we appreciate the Corps' efforts to, to work with us to get that done. Just to give a little bit of perspective, we were at about seventeen and a half feet on the river level. So that's, that's full bank. We see the water come up to about this parking lot whenever it's at that, that height flooding the recreation area. And see water in some of the storm drains around town. Seventeen feet, so then if you go to twenty-one feet, this parking lot's pretty much covered in water. And we start seeing the level come up in some areas around town. Twenty-two feet, we've got businesses flooding in downtown and downtown has to evacuate. So we're at seventeen, that's twenty-two. At twenty-three feet, the eighty-five, exit two interchange floods. And we get much more extensive flooding. So it only takes a foot of elevation increase and once it gets to that level to start having a real large impact. And so the, the, the two thousand and three flood, which was the highest level West Point seen since the dam was built, was twenty-three point two feet. So we were four or five feet away from that level with the level that we had yesterday, which is, which is a lot as far as release goes. It, it takes a lot of volume. I think that it was, I think it peaked at about ninety-eight thousand cubic feet per second. So it takes a lot more water to get that other five feet of elevation. Anyway, that's just, that's just information more than anything else to kind of put it in context as to where we were yesterday. Really not that, not in that critical of a position.
Hey Ed, that twenty-three point two, the highest since the latest in town, what year was that?
Two thousand and three. So for the, for the two storms combined, we have received a lot of calls from residents and businesses, contractors, elected officials, all kinds of support to the city. People have been calling, offering to, to help, to work, to do whatever needs to be done. We try to channel those in the right direction. Since most of the damage is in the county, we've sent them to Truett County EMA. So they have been collecting that information and then reaching out to those people as they, as they needed any assistance or can provide assistance to individuals. We also received a lot of calls about stormwater issues in the city. Again, eight to ten inches of rain is our estimate. That's about twenty percent of the rainfall that we would receive in a year. We received in one storm, basically. So our stormwater system certainly cannot handle that kind of rain. It's been built over a hundred and fifty years and, you know, over time, things have changed. But we had a lot of calls, people wanted us to come out during the storm. I want you to see, you know, what, you know, I've got water in the street I've never seen before, come and look at this. And we couldn't respond to, to those calls. So, but we are trying to get out, assess all those things and make sure that, that the city infrastructure is the best that it can be, that we can handle those things. We're not, not trying to ignore people or their concerns, but we just want to take our time now and try to address anything that we can or that needs to be addressed in the system. So at this time, instead of me trying to give y'all any details, I'm gonna let the department directors come and give y'all some updates on what they did specifically. And first, Sam, if you would come. Talking about utilities.
Evening boss, I'm in overtime. Sunday morning at six forty-nine, we began receiving breaker operations from both of our substations. There was a total of thirty-two breaker operations within three and a half minutes. Six fifty-nine, we received our first of many power outage reports. Not knowing how bad the damage was, at that point, I called the power supervisor and told him to head to the city, help assess the damage. Once we completed the assessment, we installed insulators in the overhead primary just to the north of Pine Street on Highway twenty-nine. This allowed us to restore power to Rupper Heights and Forest Park areas. This area of the system was restored about eleven AM on Sunday. It could have been fifteen or twenty minutes one way or the other, but it was somewhere around eleven o'clock. The remainder of the power system north of this point was left de-energized due to the amount of damage and repairs. Isolating the power system left a total of thirty customers without power. The initial outage was a hundred and forty-four customers. West Point had three broken poles, four poles laid over that were unusable for use, one pole that was pulled completely out of the ground. Several services blew down from the houses. I brought in a tree contractor to start cleaning the fallen trees, overhead wires and poles as we'd route the plan to rebuild the damage. This is not an easy task due to the amount of damage, not only to the city's facilities on the pole line, but also the attaches as well. The attaches lines are very large and heavy and their damage is much more significant than ours as it stretched all the way up Highway twenty-nine. This slowed the process due to the large area of the attaches having to rebuild or reinstall on the poles before we could replace the city's wiring. The amount of traffic on Sunday morning made it impossible for us to get equipment into the poles to start repairs. You just could not get access in there, there was too many people. Once, once an established access control was created to stop the inflow of traffic, we began repairs just after one PM on Sunday. I know that seems like a long time from the initial outage, but it, we just could not get the equipment in there, there was too many people. Later in the afternoon, Sunday storm began to roll through back to back, leaving only thirty minute or so windows, opportunities to crew to make repairs to the system. Around ten PM, a decision was made to stop the work for the night, come back next morning. This due to the crews having already been working for more than fifteen hours. And the weather was showing waves of thunderstorms coming back and back for the remainder of the night. We really weren't going to be able to do anything. Around ten forty-five, a storm brought down a tree on the west side of town. That was handled quickly and the crews left for the night around midnight. At two forty-five, crews were called back due to a storm bringing down a large lamp in the Indian Hill section of town. Creating a large power outage. Crews were back at five a, until five AM cleaning that up and restoring the power. Power crews returned at eight AM on Monday and returned repairing the damage on the system that was left from the night before. Around eleven AM, the repairs were complete and the power was restored to the affected area that was damaged by the tornado. One street was overlooked, the fuses were not closed, it was Neil Street. We got a call at six o'clock, six-thirty, so we got those customers back on at that time. And after that, we only had two customers remaining out, one on Highway twenty-nine and one on Brookwood since this morning. One on Highway twenty-nine is back restored, so the only one left out is on Brookwood. I dispatched the city's natural gas department to the area damaged by the tornado around eight AM on Sunday morning. We made our way to each service to make sure they were, the gas was off to all the houses and buildings. That was very difficult. A leak survey was performed of the area and we did find an underground gas leak. We excavated that, made the repairs, got that stopped. We'd done two additional leaks, one Sunday afternoon and one yesterday, just to ensure we didn't miss any leaks and there was no gas leaks in the area. To create another emergency situation, those people don't need to have that. Late Sunday afternoon, I sent the water crews in to try and find all the water meters, cut them off. That was very unsuccessful due to the amount of damage. We'll get back to those as soon as we can. Sunday morning, we just, since we couldn't get in, we assisted in helping set up access control and trying to reroute traffic. I know it inconvened some of the people in Forest Park and Rupper Heights, but we put our heads together and thought with the amount of truck traffic, we would send them through the industrial park where trucks could turn around if they needed to. Other than that, I would, I would really like to say thank you to Coaches, Johnny's Pizza, Poki's, Michael Giverns, Sid Lockhart. And I'm sure these guys got many, many, many more that supported us and come out and they, they really took care of us and we really appreciate them.
Sam, thank you guys for your job well done.
Thank you.
I will.
Thank you. Today has been a hard, a difficult, busy day, but it has been a breath of fresh air compared to the last two. It's an understatement. On March twenty-sixth, about the time the storm hit, we lost all our radio communications due to power loss, power loss at the primary radio antenna located on Davidson Road. We also had backup generator failure at that site. So we were out of radio communications, police and fire until approximately one thirty, two o'clock that afternoon. Combine that with the loss of cellular service, operations were a nightmare for everybody out there. We could not communicate with anyone. Somebody said, "Give me a call." I told them that, you know, "Only way I can do it is send smoke signals and my woods wet right now because I can't get anything out." Approximately seven fifteen responded to storm damage on Kia Part Way. That's the location where the cell tower was taken down. Shortly after that, we responded to Highway twenty-nine, this is Truett County Fire Department inserting and clearing all the residents for occupants that were in the residence. We did locate one later on in the morning that people were still trapped in it and we were able to get them out. There was a total of five reported injuries in the tornado-hit area. My last count, all of them were out of the hospital, but one, I think. Let's see. Coordinated delivery and rescue response to the given incident with the Truett County ELC, which was established at the Truett County Headquarters on Hamilton Road. They were working it from up there and I was kind of the eyes and the ears down here, working it for them on this side, along with our battalion chief. It's very difficult, like I said before, to maintain communication due to the loss of cellular and the non-capable radio systems and the loss of our radio system. I established a command post at the fifteen oh six building for city and county staff for rehab and to get a little bit of rest. I established emergency shelter at West Point Gym, coordinated with American Red Cross for staffing supplies for the shelter. So far, we're averaging forty-five per night staying at the shelter. Tonight, they're saying it may be as high as ten staying tonight. There has been a steady flow of residents coming through, in and out during the day for food supplies, showers. And one of the biggest things they're asking for is information on state or federal assistance for the disaster area. As of right now, there have been no declarations made for state or federal assistance to this disaster. As Sammy said, food was provided to the city and county staff workers working the disaster. Poki's, Johnny's, Coaches, Chambers County SO, the Dolman family, Hobbsville Police Department, Valley McDonald's, numerous other donations that weren't documented. The response is very grateful from all the providers, to all the providers. West Point proved once again in a time of need, we truly supported each other. I mean, it was amazing the outpouring of support we had. At four o'clock, I attended a press conference at the Truett County Airport with Truett County EMA. During this time of all this going on, we also responded to three medical calls within the city that were non-storm related. We had to request assistance for Lynette on one of those. And then once the scene on twenty-nine was actually stabilized, I returned all my units to the back quarters to prepare for anything else in the city. And that was all on Sunday. Think I got home Sunday, seven-ish, eight-ish. Two AM Monday morning, I got a call from nine one one, we had lost all radio communications again due to the power surge from the outage in Indian Hills, I think. We've lost a battery backup. We got radios back up about five-thirty that morning. Since I was already here, I went to McDonald's and got food and fed all the troopers and everybody that stayed overnight for security. Worked all day pretty much monitoring the massive rain and wind event that started around six fifteen yesterday morning. By eight AM, the local crews were already out of their banks. We already had houses flooded in the county around us, especially on Gabbittville Road. Eight AM, we already had forty-five foot of water in houses there. Combine the massive rains, like he said, estimated ten inches, and the debris and storm damage from the storm on Sunday, it was just more than we could handle and it created the localized flooding in the city. During this event, fire department responded to five emergency calls for service in the city. We had a roof collapse in seventeen hundred block of East Tenth Street, which ruptured a natural gas line, causing a gas leak along with a water leak, along with the roof collapse at the Coca-Cola plant. Had a flash flood in the seven hundred block of East Ninth Street with a person trapped in a residence. We were able to get her out and get her to the shelter with assistance of Mr. Moon, Georgia Motor Carrier Division, and who else was there? Roger was there, was able to get her out and get her transported, and Chief Carter. Had a tree on the residence in the four hundred block of Brookwood, did damage to the roof and pulled the power off of that residence as well. Two medical calls that transported to local hospitals, non-storm related. We continued to monitor the river and tributaries to stay aware of the potential localized flooding, work with the Corps engineers, public works, West Point PD, utilities to prepare for potential street closures and removal of services such as electrical and eventual flood. We did end up removing the electrical services from the lower side of the recreation due to, we knew they were fixing to go into water. We closed Avenue C as well, going into Recreation. Some road closures that were due to flooding around the city and in the city were Gabbittville Road at the creek up there. They ended up closing it. I eighty-five at exit six, the northbound entrance ramp, eighty-five actually flooded yesterday. So they closed, holding their state down until they got that cleared up. Avenue C into Recreation downtown, we closed Third Avenue from West Seventh to the state line, Fourth Avenue from West Eighth to the state line, and West Seventh between Third and Fourth Avenue. That's about it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mine ain't long with them two. Mine's short and sweet, I was pretty much like the point goal, I was just doing assistance, especially on Sunday. Sunday, I got a call at six forty-nine and at seven o'clock, they said, "Tornado had hit West Point, you need to get up and get down." So got down there, called my crew and asked, "Hey, y'all, come on, we gotta go." I said, "Do what you're paid for." So they came in, first priority, I had a crew to go ride the streets of West Point, first priority. So I met with Sammy when I first got there and he said, "We need to block Highway twenty-nine at OG Skinner." OG Skinner is a place that always floods, can't hit it, inflects too much water, can't hit it. Like you want to talk DOT, we can't hit it. So I went to twenty-nine and blocked twenty-nine, had my guys ride the streets of West Point. They took one section, I took the other section. While we ride the street, we had to ride the street, see if there were trees down, and other roads flooded. That's our priority, first priority. Hate to have them Truett County, but they get paid from the city, gotta worry about y'all first. So had them ride a section, went to block twenty-nine, pressed AM and, tried to stop some of the traffic so his guys can do the work. So, and I took another section. Mr. Moon called me, asked, "What you doing, something right now?" I had to see what was going on. But due to rain, some parts of the city are known to have floods. So we've got to be prepared to barricade them part. Now, Sunday, we were really blessed and waited, none of our street did flood, I mean, OG Skinner did. So after that, we started road, closing roads down so Sammy, AM and the utilities department could have a safe place to work. Now, it made a lot of people mad about us closing the road and they can't get up there and sightsee. Didn't bother me. So closed the road down, talked to Chief Carter, he put a man at OG in twenty-nine. They, they liked me, but they respect that badge a little bit more than me. I ain't got a badge on me. So thanked Chief Carter for putting a man down there with the barricade. And we did slow the traffic down. Sammy came back later on and asked me, "Could I put another barricade at Loveless Road?" "Sure." That's how I told him, we did that. And we did that and put a barricade, leave it at a few more other places per Truett County. Tried to get in contact with the public work director for Truett County. Told them any kind of system they need, just call them, right now we'll help them. Did have a man to ride the city, a crew to ride the city road every two hours, just to make sure there ain't no trees there, wind, flood or nothing. So also assisted with a command post, make sure everything was clean. We got to keep a clean area right there because a lot of people in and out. Had my guys to assist with that and any other barricades needed. And pretty much, I stayed there to maybe six o'clock Sunday evening. And pressed AM and, he didn't need no more help from me and my guys, so I let my guy go home. Monday morning yesterday was a different story. Got a call about six-thirty, saying it rained real hard, you better get up. I said, "Okay." So I already had my guy from Sunday to put barricades and stuff on the truck and the trailer to get prepared for Monday. Talked to Chief Staley, we coordinated on what roads need to be blocked. So we blocked the road that he said. And later on that day, talked to Chief Staley, coordinated with Mr. Moon, that other road, just in case the roof got up high like it did in oh three. The stage barricaded other parts, which we did. Got a lot of complaints, like Mr. Moon said, from people about their basement flood. I'm sorry, but I got to worry about the cities. Main roads first. I can't, I'm sorry, it just, it is what it is, like third avenue. So coordinated with Mr. Moon and Chief Staley, Sam and me. Yesterday, pretty much blocked roads, unstop drains. Due to the amount of rain we got, quickly we unstop a drain, uncover a drain, five, ten minutes later, gonna be culled back up at least. It just is what it is. Had five or six trucks riding around trying to unstop drains in the rain. So people open playing, I'm sorry. If anything, if we do better, you got a better wage, let me know. That's pretty much all I did last day.
All right, he said we're gonna be short.
That was short. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you for talking, you keep talking so much.
They say I love talking a lot.
Alright, that it for your report, Ed?
It's Carter and I've got one more.
Oh, we got Kevin, okay, alright, good.
Mine will be shorter than Mr. Emmens and Chief Staley's, maybe a little longer than Mr. Palmer. And I apologize in advance because due to the, the means of communication from yesterday, some of the times that we did what we did were not logged accurately. So I'll go in chronological order, I'm a little off on my times. But Sunday morning's event, the main, we did an all-call. After I got the call from dispatch that the radios were down, preliminary calls have started to have been made to other officers. So I contacted Officer Thomas, had him to assist me with an all-call to get all officers in. And I was delayed on my response to the city due, due to the path of the storm. But I made it in, I believe, which was record time. And began to, we divided and conquered as far as calls for service, i.e. traffic crashes. There was a lot of traffic crashes that came out back to back. And some of them were on interstate due to downed trees. So we assisted with tree removal to the extent that we could. On, while coming back into the city, that's when it was brought to my attention that twenty-nine, it was time to shut down twenty-nine. We coordinated with DOT to notify them that we were shutting the road down at that time, was at Highway twenty-nine and OG Skinner. So at that point, we were a three-fold operation. We had officers ask for calls for service, officers doing traffic, and officers that were pretty much Rover to go in and to assist the Mr. Palmer and Fire Department with making sure that roads were open. Chief Staley established a command post at the city building shortly after that. I, I assisted him in any way that I could to facilitate, you know, getting resources to the city building. We had officers, we had to divide officers and put them at the end of Loveless Road because the people who were coming in, we were trying to keep traffic off of the guys working in the road, Mr. Emmens' crew. There was, for whatever reason, there was a, a little deception upon motorists who were stating that they lived in the area, but they did not. They just wanted to come down and look around. We had to, those were the people that we were trying to keep out to begin with. So fast forwarding about four hours into it, we realized the inconvenience that we were placing, possibly unnecessarily on some of the people that were residents of Roper High and Forest Park area. So we ordered the line to be moved back. I coordinated with Mr. Palmer, we got it moved back to Pine and twenty-nine. That, it made it easier for people to turn around if they had come up that far by accident. And around, I guess it was, it was around lunchtime, around noon, assisted with the Red Cross in establishing a shelter at the gym. And at that point, it became another three-pronged approach to provide twenty-four hour security there per their mandate. So that we had to man that post twenty-four, until they are no longer operated, we'll have an officer there. And at that point, aside from standard calls for service, all we were doing was assisting with traffic control. And that day, at that time, the only place that was blocked in the city of West Point was at Highway twenty-nine and Pine. We were assisting at the, at the city limits down by Loveless as well to get, to help get people out and to turn around. There's a lot of moving parts down there. Monday morning, I was delayed because I was taking shelter at my house. Uh, Monday morning, I was delayed because I was taking shelter at my house the morning the, the storm came through. So, I, my, my, um, response was a little delayed, but I got here just in time to assist with the roof collapse and the gas leak at Code Plant. At that time, all resources were spent, uh, every available officer, we had already called, we had two officers that were responding, but they had not gotten here yet. So, all resources to include the animal patrol officer was assisting in blocking traffic. Simultaneously, when the seven hundred block of East Ninth Street started to flood, uh, we were able to be creative and keep both East Tenth Street shut down and assist with, um, the individual in need on East Ninth Street. After that, we moved into roadside or road assessment to make sure that the roads were passable. Um, Mr. Palmer assisted, uh, his crew assisted in closing down Third Avenue at, uh, State Line, and Fourth Avenue at the West Eighth Street block. We kept check on bridge levels, um, probably around two P.M. that day, there was a little bit of conflict between communication from, uh, the command at the side of the storm, and the officers that were posted for traffic control out on Gatlinville Road. We ended up having to close, get, True County, excuse me, ended up closing Gatlinville Road due to the water level at Bridge Creek. So, at that point, it became essential to communicate that that route was not a good route to circumvent the twenty-nine shutdown. So, that was an ordeal as well, but we got that handled, it didn't take long. And, um, at that point, it was more or less keeping check on the roads upon asking calls for service, we had a few. It ranged from, uh, alleged aggravated assault with a B.B. gun to come please talk to my kids, I want to scare them because they're not listening to me. So, there was, the calls for service really didn't change much, uh, the frequency or the volume of them did, uh, there wasn't as many, uh, as, uh, normal. And, um, all in all, I think, we showed the importance, and when I say we, I mean all the departments, I think we showed the importance of being able to work together and communicate, even without a radio or cellphone, smoke signals, smoke signals don't work too well in the rain. But, before, that's it, unless y'all have any questions.
I have some questions across all of the areas.
Okay, we're waiting, you can go ahead and finish it, we'll take. Yes, uh, before I turn back over to Mr. Moon, I'd like to introduce y'all to, uh, our newest officer, Officer Jeremy Monkis. Uh, Officer Monkis, he came to us, uh, back later last year, I believe it was November, uh, when he came on board. He's from the community, he's worked, he was with Universal Allied, uh, Security at Kia for a little over ten years, I believe. So, he's, um, he's, he's part of the, he's part of the family now, and, uh, I got high hopes for him, I got high expectations, and I know he's gonna perform, and I encourage everybody to, to get to know him, say hey on the way out, if you would.
Welcome to West Point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for doing what you're doing, that belt looks really heavy. You've got fair scissors.
Questions?
I, go ahead. Y'all did great, I really appreciate it, hard work, I know you're sleepy, you're probably ready to go home a little bit right now. Uh, what did, what, what failures did you have that we probably need to consider that we could improve? I know we got a cell problem or a communication problem, cause that sounds like number one, but is there anything that was known and said, hell, I wish we would have been in this situation so that we, was there anything that we could learn out of this, that's my question.
Um, certainly, uh, you know, a lot of those come to the matter of just resources in general, being a small community, which, we serve a small community, so. Um, I'm sure all of these directors are gonna, can make you a, a list, as long as you want to read, about things that we need. Uh, I think clearly, communications for us on the radio side is an issue, and it's something that we've, we've been working on for a while as far as how to solve it, but it continues to be a problem, and it's an expensive fix. So, that's something that we're definitely gonna be talking about soon as a plan to come up with how we, uh, resolve that issue. Certainly, we have, uh, on the, again, on the, uh, stormwater side, we've got some, some, uh, missing pieces there, with some things that we need to do, so we're gonna be talking about some of those from a comprehensive planning standpoint, so.
I just want to say thank you.
Ms. Williams?
It sounds like it's a great team effort, and I echo what's already been said several times, uh, we really appreciate all of the, all of you've done. It's, it's hard to be prepared for something that doesn't happen, it's, you know, all the time. But, um, uh, thank you for, you know, rolling with the punches and figuring it out. It sounds like it's not a, an emergency management person, per se, all of you are, I guess, right? As it relates to your respective areas, is that, would that be an accurate statement?
Um, we, we don't have specifically.
You don't have a go-to person.
Director, right, somebody that would direct those things.
So, some of what I'm gonna ask about, I guess it just depends on who's assumed that role, uh, maybe you or some of the, some, some of your subordinates. Uh, but is there, is, was, is there anybody coordinating the relief efforts? Like, I know the Church First Methodist, um, is providing some, some services, the Red Cross has a shelter in the gym, the, um, Southern Baptist have, uh, uh, let's see, disaster relief shelter at Bethlehem Baptist, and, um, maybe some other organizations. I've gotten numerous calls from people wanting to know what do you need, what, how can we help? I'm sure you've gotten, all of you've gotten the same questions. Is there any one person or organization that's kind of in charge of that? And I don't mean True County Emergency Management, but as far as the city of West Point, is there anything we're gonna do?
True County Emergency Management, because the, the scene, the issues you're talking about are in True County. And even if we had something in the city, it wouldn't say that we couldn't use True County Emergency Management to spearhead the efforts here.
Okay.
So, it's not something that we're doing locally to provide individuals with assistance for their personal needs. I mean, we do have the shelter, we've got staff that's doing that, we're providing the building, but we're not a clearinghouse for, um, Steve Trammell, if he offers his services to take a crew and do some work, we're not, we're not coordinating that effort, that effort goes to True County.
But the shelter that is actually in West Point, uh, the church is actually in West Point, the church is, that I'm aware of. So, again, what they're doing is just kind of, um, independent, is nobody's kind of coordinating any.
No, those are, those are, uh, those are independent efforts.
Miss, Miss, I went down and met with the Red Cross.
I did too.
And, and he was over in, um, Macon today handling the flood situation, but he will be back tomorrow, and he's supposed to try to help us coordinate and get the people that are displaced right now, get their information and all of that.
Yeah, I think we could be better served by somebody kind of taking the ball and, you know, coordinating, um, you know, you go to, um.
I spoke with the EMA Director of the County today, he was going to coordinate with Jason Ritter, who is the regional EMA Director for our region, and see if he can get someone from EMA to come to this area and do a, something in West Point. I told him he did not need to be in La Grange, he needed to be in West Point, because these, a lot of these people are not going to travel in La Grange, they want to be here local. Even though they're not in the city, they still consider themselves from West Point. So, they're gonna try to do something here in the city, he could not assure me and guarantee them that they were gonna do that, to explain the funding issues, if there is gonna be any funding, if there's not gonna be any funding. So, they're trying to coordinate that through Jima now to do something in this area. Uh, Mr. Steele, the EMA Director, he was going to try to attend this meeting live, evidently something happened, he could not make it to answer some of these questions. But that is something that I have reached out to the County EMA, to see if we can get Jima here to do something in the city to help alleviate some of these calls we're getting.
Yeah, and so keep us all abreast of what happens with that, cause I think, you know, oftentimes, as you put it, you know, it's so close to West Point, it may be outside of our footprint, but it's so close to us that it's kind of considered West Point's problem, West Point's issue to deal with. And while we're not trying to step on anybody's toes, you know, um, people are suffering, people need help. And, concerns me that we got people wanting to help, but the lack of management of that effort seems to be impeding progress there. With respect to Jima and FEMA?
Just, just one second, but, again, we're facilitating any issue with the Red Cross. If, if Jima comes to West Point, we're gonna facilitate helping them have a facility, getting the message out that they need to get out. We're passing along those individuals that want to help to the right authority for those people that need help to go through, to get it, and we're pointing people in that direction. So, we're, we're not not providing services to individuals that are in need in the city of West Point, that's not our intent. That's, that's what you said before you stopped in that, I think, but that's not our intent.
That was not my, well, that, my message, okay.
Okay.
Jima and FEMA, do we have any connections, any, has anybody made a call to the governor or whomever it takes to get this declared at the disaster area? Okay, so, do we know anything about that?
I met, I met yesterday with Congressman Ferguson, Mayor, Mayor-elect Willie T. Edmondson, Eric Mosley, Assistant County Manager, uh, Louis Davis, and a couple of Drew's assistants, and discussed the whole FEMA issue, and gonna try to consolidate the whole region in, it, it, there's a nineteen million dollar damage threshold that has to be reached for FEMA, the, from the conversation that we had. So, they're gonna have to find a lot of, and there's gotta be a lot of public infrastructure too, to get FEMA involved with it too. It's not just individual damages, a whole lot of hurdles to go through to get FEMA involved with this. And, and Congressman Ferguson is working on that, and trying to, you know, it goes all, it stretches all the way into Marywata County. So, he's trying to put everybody together, so that can happen, and it has to be declared too, like we talked about earlier.
There is a process, of course. I apologize if everybody was aware of that to me, but I'm glad we're in this meeting so that I could learn of that, and glad that we got people working on our behalf. With regard to city of West Point rules about storm degree, that's another call, I believe, that's been very, very urgent. What is the rule, is it, is it the same thing that applies when there's not a storm? In other words, certain things are, the same things are picked up on the side of the road that we always do?
Sure.
Have we made any, you know, revisions to that, or any considerations for doing anything different?
Most of the storm damage that's occurring or trees that are down, those individuals are hiring contractors to come and clean those things up. If there's anything that's been put out that we haven't picked up, I'm not aware of any issues that we've had due to storm damage. So, I don't, we haven't changed any rules, but we haven't had, again, the tornado didn't, didn't come through our city, so we haven't activated any process to do those type cleanup activities.
Right, storm didn't, I'm, I'm asking just about debris, I mean, a lot of rain, that kind of.
I'll speak on that.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Moon, no matter.
Go ahead.
Last two weeks ago, we had a windstorm came through here, we had a lot thrown debris, we had trees down. Me, made a decision, talked, talked to him. So, a lot of residents put stuff on the side of the road. Yeah, we did break the city orders, due to that time, when a lot of people put stuff on the side of the road, we did go above that five cubic yards. We just picked it up. Now, I told him, well, we make one round through the city, then we go back to that five cubic yard, we go back to the city order. That's what.
That's excellent information to have, and, you know, changing situations.
Man, if I did see a pre-service, if I, for instance, if I seen a pre-service in Mr. Moon yard, he required to get it all. But, if Dee Wee can put all her stuff on the side of the road, okay, I don't care if it be ten cubic yard, we picked it up. I think that was just the right thing to do.
What prompted my question about that is disaster relief recovery. Bethlehem Church, they say they have a whole lot of folks in the area, they do have a church full of folks, cots, and they're feeding them, and, you know, a lot of folks coming in to help. And, they're having to park their trucks and not do anything, they say, because of, um, issues with them putting stuff on the curb now. I, I'm pretty sure this is more in the area of the county, not the city of West Point, but we got stuff that's down in the city, so, you know, we need to know what we're gonna do, and you just answered that question. But what's prompting my question about this, Ed, is I hope we're not in a situation where we're, you know, impeding the progress because folks from outside are feeling like, you know, they're being given citations because, you know, they're not following the rules. Now, I haven't said that, I think there are two sides at least to every story, three in most cases. And, there are probably reasons why you don't need to move everything, I mean, until this damage can be assessed, until insurance, the justice can come in and look, I would think you wouldn't want to clean everything up. But, there are some things that's gotta be cleaned up, you can't leave trees and lions down and that kind of thing, so.
In the, in the city?
I, now, I preface that by saying that, now, I asked the question because it was being prompted by the resistance that this group is receiving, they are in our city, they're housed up at Bethlehem Church, uh, they're here to help storm victims. We're not issuing citations to them, but the county is. So, you know, I'm just trying to get a better understanding, I've heard from them, intend to talk with folks in True County and try to get the rest of the story, but at the same time, while we've got all of you here that maybe have pieces of information that I've not heard, I'm all ears. I'd like to, you know, I like to gather information and then kind of see the full landscape of the issue. So, I'm not aware of all of those severe things that I mentioned happening in West Point, but I do know that the storm was close enough to West Point that we've got some debris issues, we've got people with trees down that are putting stuff on the side of the road that have questions about, are they gonna pick it up? So, it's kind of a two-fold comment or question.
I don't, I don't know of anybody that we, the night service front, due to storm, to break. If there is somebody out there, they'll contact us, we'll certainly try to, do our best to work with them as we always do.
I was contacted by D.O.T. today, and they said that the storm damage in the county, and anything on the state highway, any debris that was deposited on the, storm damage on the state highway, they would be picking that up, stated towards the D.O.T., they would be picking up anything on the state highways. And, he also said anything on the subroads of the tornado disaster area, if the county contacted the state, they would make arrangements to help assist to clean all that up also. And pretty much from what I saw today, the only thing we have in the city on the side of the road is on the state highway, so I'm assuming D.O.T. will start picking that up this week.
And so that sounds like something that maybe through communication between the county folks and D.O.T.
And I gave that information to the EMA Director to relate to the engineers today with the county to get in touch with D.O.T.
Great, thank you. Um, and lastly, um, again, all the equipment up at the church, um, the big trucks, and all that they've brought in to help people clear out the downed trees and so forth. They've been trying to get in touch with somebody in the police department about, um, patrolling the area. People have been, they think tampering with cars and trucks up there, and there's, there are a lot of vehicles up there. The church has a person, uh, but it's just one person. There is an officer I know that was down at the Red Cross shelter, so I don't know if, you know, there's a difference in the shelters, that makes one unqualified, one not.
No, the request wasn't made for the church until, uh, until late last night, and last night there was an officer assigned, uh, And last night, there was an officer assigned, uh, an officer in that zone was assigned to do periodic checks.
Oh, really?
Yes, and that will continue until there are no longer.
So do you have a point person up that you have somebody that you coordinate with? Because they need to be aware of that. They're not aware that they've gotten any, any assistance with that and actually, you know, said they weren't able even get through the policy anytime.
Did they call, did they call nine-one-one when they had an issue?
I don't know if they called, I doubt they called nine-one-one. They said they called the police department.
I haven't talked to anyone directly from the church. No, I have not, but I had that.
Check with your, check with your admin because that's the impression I've been given that they tried to get through to you and.
Well, I'll let them know, I'll make sure that they know that we've, we've already done it, we've already implemented that. But, uh, I'll make sure that that's communicated.
Communication, okay, thank you, thank you.
I have one more item, non-storm related. Um, it's not only agenda as a action item tonight, but something that I've been working on and it has picked up. So I'm gonna give you the information and this may be something that would be on the, uh, it is listed under the new business for the, for the, uh, well, let's see. This is, I think that's an old one. Anyway, EZ Blockchain, y'all know that they've been here for a while now, a year and a half. They, um, they have been a electric customer of ours. They are potentially going to sell their business to a company called Clean Spark. Um, in our contract with EZ Blockchain, uh, they cannot, um, assign that contract, which is the way we wanted it, to another vendor, another person. So EZ Blockchain has asked that now, I think they've reached the point of negotiation, that the council give, uh, give them approval to assign the contract to Clean Spark. Uh, they're very similar companies, uh, in some regards and not in others. Um, EZ Blockchain is not a crypto mining company. So basically what they do is they emit space inside of their facilities for people to mine crypto. Clean Spark is a crypto mining company. Uh, they, they have four locations in the state of Georgia. They're already, and they're all electric cities, the city of Washington, um, city of College Park, city of Norcross, and the city of Sandersville. Based on Clean Spark's conversations with them, they're MEAG's largest customer, about two hundred megawatts. So they're purchasing a lot of power through these other cities at this, at this time. If they were to, um, make a deal with EZ Blockchain and the council agrees to assign the contract, uh, it's a three-year contract that ends in November of twenty-four. However, I'm sure they're gonna wanna renegotiate that contract as soon as they get it because, uh, they're gonna want to utilize, uh, some other locations to potentially expand the, uh, their, their use. Uh, the rate would remain the same, there's still a five percent margin that's guaranteed to the city, so the rate would, would still be the same. Uh, they would have, at this point, they would have the two points of delivery, which one's on OG Skinner Drive and one's out on West Point Road. That's the two places that EZ Blockchain is operating now. And we'd have a sixty-day, uh, security for, uh, payment purposes. So a deposit or a bond for sixty days to cover sixty days of electricity. So the agreement would be the same, the only, I think they would want to amend that so that they could use some more energy out of Pear Street Station, which we had already talked about with EZ Blockchain prior to all of this coming about. So, um, most likely at the next meeting, this would be on the agenda for the council to consider allowing EZ Blockchain to assign with your approval the, the contract that they currently have with Clean Spark that wants to purchase their company.
Have they purchased it from EZ Blockchain?
Um, that's at least that portion of their business.
How much income has this generated for the city over the last year?
Um, I don't know total, but I did, last month's bill was two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So the margin, uh, for that, five percent was eleven thousand one hundred dollars.
For a month? And what does it cost us?
That's, that's, that's private margin.
That's, that's clear.
So overall, they've been a good customer?
They have been, you know, crypto crashed the end of last year. They, they shut down completely for a while, but they did come back and they're, they're running again. They're running, uh, eight, eight megawatts now. They're, they're doing fine. I think that, um, again, this company's got a large presence in Georgia where EZ Blockchain doesn't. They're small, they're here, and I think one other small location in Georgia.
When you say they've been a good customer, you mean in terms of what?
They've been up to the agreement, they've made the city.
Paying, making payments, paying us.
They've, sure, they've paid us what they were supposed to pay.
They're current on their bill, um, they're following the, the agreement. As it was, as it was written, we got a two million dollar deposit or a bond on them to protect us from any failure. So it's pretty safe for us.
And they're our largest utility customer. Um, maybe not year to year, not year-round, but maybe.
Yes, I would, yeah, they definitely are large, that eight, that eight megawatts. It, we're, our, our whole system is only about twelve and a half megawatts.
And they're eating eight, that's on a good day. So they're by far the largest.
Right.
How big is that large? Hyundai Transit? Who's that large?
Um, Hyundai Transit or Interface Four.
They run next to me.
That's it.
They're about half of that or what?
Pardon?
They're about half of that or what?
No, they're.
A fourth of it. It's not the rest of the cities doing, what'd you say, the whole city does twelve?
About twelve.
EZ Blockchain's doing eight?
Right.
Their rates point twelve today. Yeah, seven days a week.
Well, our mayor had an interview with the Weather Channel, so he has, uh, painted me the agenda to complete our.
Politician for you.
That's a politician. Next thing on our agenda is boarding committee appointments. We have three interested to serve. We have Deborah Robinson, who is prime for, uh, reappointment to the Halt Library Board, Larry Duncan, the Halt Library Board, and Patrick to municipal planning board. Have any discussion on these?
Um, there were some, uh, these are just the ones you've had applications from, I guess. There were some others that, um, the term's expiring, so, um.
These are the ones that are immediate and that are up for vote at our next business session. Uh, I'm sure our next council meeting will have updates on others who are expiring, as they're expiring.
Right, the next.
I was thinking we had like Trudy Johnson, uh, March of this year, no? For, um, planning board, did I misread something? Um, I was thinking there was more than those three, Larry, Deborah, Cabot.
We've got Trudy, we've got Trudy Johnson.
Trudy's not listed on this form that I have.
She hasn't sent in.
She hasn't sent in her information.
And then there were some other vacancies too.
There's one for board of adjustments, there remains vacant.
So vacancy.
So at what point do we throw out names of people we'd like to recommend? Or do you only consider them if that person sends in a form?
I think we need to encourage them to send in a form.
If we, if we receive anything, we bring that to the council and the, we try to do it in the time that those positions are, uh, like this March.
The form is required, you don't take any nominations from the board or anything. Form is required.
That's what, yeah, that's what the council will decide on, so that's y'alls.
We ask that anyone that has any recommendations would encourage that person to submit a form. That's how we've operated for some time. And if they're interested, the form's easy to get and, uh.
Question.
Yeah.
Greg Zachary is still here. He's had some bad health issues that's limited his ability to be the man that he wants to be.
Right.
And, and so when does his seat need to be replaced?
It's, uh.
December of this year.
It's December.
Well, what I'm saying is he's, he's not able to.
You mean if he's not able to, you know?
Um, that really will come from the board. If, if that's the case, and that's the way we got it.
Right, right. Okay.
Has he indicated that? I mean, his, you're aware.
His, his health is so bad right now.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, it's unfortunate.
Mm-hmm.
I love missing Mr. Griggs and he's not doing well.
But he hasn't resigned or anything to where they would be.
No, he, that's why I'm asking, if, if, if he's incapable of, huh, sitting on the board, when is his seat available? And he just said, when the development authority says that it is, you know.
Or to, or to.
At December is when he rolls off.
There's a lot of people who ask the board if they're ill, but they still don't, they're serving.
Okay, any more discussion on boarding committee appointments? That brings us to the Harold Preliminary Concept Plan, Dennis?
Uh, what you had received was a, a report that will come about. First will go before the municipal planning board for their review input and consideration. This is the Harold Family Track, this is the Brent Scarborough Track that is residential only, uh, center family, which is comprised of five hundred and fifty-four residential units. Municipal Planning Board will meet on it and discuss, and if there's any conditions or anything they need, that will get with them on that. And then it will come to you on the tenth, if needed, or we will see what they plan to do so that you will get started, so.
Any questions for Dennis? Hearing none, we have a rezoning request by William Wright for Steria Drive, Dennis?
Yes, again, coming before you will be on the people tenth. Um, this is kind of a follow-up to Summer Subdivision, Brookwood. This is open with Steria. Uh, Mr. Wright has purchased, had purchased previously, um, six lots, three lots he wished to build on. Again, we are looking at, rather than changing the, the zoning ordinance, we want to, uh, allow him to get his houses built around sixteen hundred square feet. Houses in that subdivision are around, uh, I think there's one at like, right at fifteen hundred square feet, which is part of the restricted covenants that are already in place there, and there's one at twenty-two hundred square feet, so.
Is Steria, uh, right in front of Georgia, the old Georgia Alabama Supply Building, is that off of twenty-nine?
I don't.
Where's Steria?
It is, yes. That, that'll be an infield on, on that area, in that subdivision, yes.
Any other questions for Dennis? Hearing none. Items on our business, for our business meeting, April the tenth at five-thirty, we have a public hearing for Mr. William Wright for Steria Drive. We have boarding committee appointments to consider. We have the Harold Preliminary Concept Plan, the rezoning request by William Wright, and the EZ Blockchain agreement reassigned. Have a motion to set the agenda.
One more.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That concludes our business tonight, do you have any announcements?
Yes, don't forget Point University's Easter, um, event, number thirtieth, on forty-four to seven, at the John Hawks Park. Also, wanna say congratulations to Dr. Joe Downs on his retirement.
Congratulations. They're gonna miss your laughter at the hospital, aren't you?
Thank you, I moved with a germ.
I have one more announcement. If, if, yeah, if y'all would, if y'all know of people that are in need and stuff, the Methodist Church has collected enough clothing to fill up the dillards. And, and so we would really appreciate it if y'all would spread the word to people that are in need to, to please come by and, and, and help themselves to whatever they need. Now, Mr. Dr.
And also, another announcement, uh, people who, um, if you know of anybody that has housing available, most of these, uh, people who were in rental properties are having a really hard time finding a place to stay. They can't go to the, they don't have home, they don't have renters insurance, which would allow them to go stay in a motel. Uh, or, you know, they're not homeowners with insurance that would allow that provision for temporary housing. So, it, it, we all know there's a shortage of housing in this area. But if you know of anybody that has something available, um, the Red Cross is kind of trying to help with that. Um, you know, most everybody was in, I mean, you might think it's been two or three days, people are sad, people weren't outside. But they're with family and that only lasts a few days before welcome runs out, in most cases, is what I'm hearing. And so, um, there's just a real, and I, there's a dire need. So if you know of anybody, the Realty Company, I think they've been bombarded, um, the management company, Stinks Management Company. Um, and I don't know about people across in Alabama, but just.
They let you, they talked to you today, got a place at the border, Senator, uh, and what have you.
Great, great, great.
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.